I will now call the October 6, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. We have with us tonight Boy Scout Troop 251 from the United Methodist Church of Lake Alana Wana that's going to come forward, and at the appropriate time, they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And right, you can go ahead and start coming this way, but I will let you know when they'll lead us in the pledge. Now, we're going to stand, observe a moment of silence, and at the appropriate time, Boy Scout Troop 251 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 251 from the United Methodist Church of Lake Alana Wana, and they're going to have to leave, so whenever you're ready, you can leave, and I appreciate you coming, and come back and see us again. One of your troop leaders there assisted me when I went out to the church to drop off some electronic recycle stuff. He reminded me of that. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. Councilman Culpepper asks that we pull Item H, and Item I has been pulled by request of the developer. So I would accept a motion to approve everything except those two items I just mentioned, which is H and I.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to make a statement concerning friendship manner. I have been involved with the residents there for quite some time, and I know I had invited Councilman Levise to also come and speak to those residents. They have been in our community for a long time, and I think it's very important that we recognize this group of men and women. They're wonderful, tax-paying, community-involved seniors. They want to be involved, and they want to make a difference. And right now, the condition of their facility really needs some improvement. So I just wanted to make a statement to that effect and let everyone know I wholeheartedly feel that this is a very important group of men and ladies, and we really need to make sure we stand by them and keep them in this facility, and that this facility meets all the requirements, and they have a nice place to live. And so I really would like to emphasize that.
You know, with all the redevelopment going on downtown, it would be very nice for them to be able to rehab that facility. So I agree with you 100%.
Yes, sir.
That being said, is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next, we have the introduction and reading of Bill 4336.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4336, an ordinance approving amended Timothy Lutheran Church, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4336, an ordinance approving amended Timothy Lutheran Church, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Karen Anderson, given Ordinance Number 4509.
Next, we have a presentation on the overview of the Unified Development Code revision process. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Before you this evening, we just want to give you a quick walkthrough of the Unified Development Code update process. As you know, back in June, the Planning Commission adopted, but did not yet enact, the updated comprehensive plan for the city. So as a part of that whole revision process, it's kind of a package deal. We're updating the comprehensive plan as well as the, essentially, the implementation, part of the implementation tool that goes along with the comprehensive plan is the Unified Development Code, or the UDC. So with that, I have here tonight Chris Brewster, our project manager from Gould Evans, who's overseeing the project of both comprehensive plan update and also the Unified Development Code update. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris to kind of walk through slideshow presentation, which was included in your packet, and we'll field any questions as they make them up.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mayor and council. As Scott mentioned, just wanted to give you an update of our progress on getting the Unified Development Code more in sync with the comprehensive plan. The way we kind of approach these code updates is to start with a real solid table of contents. It may sound simple, but the better organized this document is the longer shelf life it'll have, so we believe strongly in that. I think you may have seen that, and we have an annotated one where we're going through section by section of the code and noting what we're changing, what's being kept the same. It's a pretty lengthy document because we're doing strike-through changes, and it gets really cumbersome, so we just wanted to give you a sneak peek of that. And then after that, I want to cover a few of the details of where we see some changes and opportunities, mainly in streamlining the code, both in terms of processes, but just in terms of the user-friendliness of the document. There's a lot of opportunities to improve it there. And then the next level of changes are things that are new that we're adding in, or substantive changes that are going to be better linked to the comprehensive plan. And then just real briefly on where we think our next steps are. Basically, we're about, I would say, 65 to 75% done with the UDC update altogether in this initial draft, and so we're going to be working with staff over the next couple of months figuring out where some of the more detailed changes need to be made and getting that refined. Just a quick reminder of what the plan was about. It's a different type of plan, and it was intentionally done that way, and it was a plan about planning for places, not land uses. It was a plan about setting up planning systems so staff can continue to do more detailed and refined planning at lower scales in the comprehensive plan through the area plans, because we really talked a lot with the committee about that's where a lot of more detailed decisions can give you better implementation strategies. It's a plan about being incremental and strategic, and we summed it up as a different way to think about the city and its long-term future. And then just another reminder of how we did set the plan up on four frameworks: places, connections, city image, and investment. And so a lot of the UDC changes that we're working with are geared towards those four frameworks of the plan. The other part about the plan was the specific plans that I mentioned, that ongoing process where you'll continually be able to update and implement the plan in more specific and detailed areas, all under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan. And that's organized under these two principles of there's a community character plan that goes into these smaller areas, which is basically the public realm, the streets, the open spaces, and things like that. And then there's the response to that, the development plan. What does your land uses and development regulations say to that? So very much kind of getting development to relate to the public realm is a strong focus of this plan, and I just remind you of that by way of that's where we see a lot of opportunities for improvement in the development standards as well. So the streamlining, basically, if you have your table of contents, you could follow along, but Section 403, 010, your current procedures, just to be honest, they were really hard to wade our way through. There was lots of things that repeated among common procedures. The sections would just repeat, and they'd be cut and pasted, which is not unusual at all in a code that's a little bit older. But we saw a lot of opportunity to really not do that for two reasons. One, when things start repeating, and you repeat something in one section and another section, it breeds conflicts, because you change it one place, and you forget to change it another place, and then you've got a mess on your hands. So we've worked really hard to streamline down into what are your common procedures, and then what are procedures unique to each application. We've also built in the opportunity to do a lot more administrative approvals, and being very clear and specific on when you can do administrative approvals and when something needs to go through to the full Planning Commission or council. As a follow-up to that, the next level down, we are adding a lot more intent statements for each substantive section. In other words, what are we trying to accomplish? Where does this link to our comprehensive plan? And then on the back end of that, what are our decision-making criteria for each of the procedures and decisions we have in there? That can streamline in a couple of ways. Applicants know what's expected of them right up front coming into the application. Decision-makers know as well, but then to play off that idea of more administrative approvals, if you want the opportunity for that, it's going to be very essential that staff has a very clear decision-making criteria for those administrative approvals. So we're adding those in as well. Chapter 408, which is your current residential design standards, we have found a better place for those in the overall design standards chapter, and so we're reserving Chapter 8 to be for special topic ordinances, things that were in your, mixed in with your procedure section, such as your wireless communication facilities ordinance, a couple of other ordinances that were floodplain. So some of those special topic ones, we felt we're better off in their own chapter to kind of keep the continuity of the code together. And then overall, a more simplified approach to planned districts. We, in discussions with staff, we understood that a lot of them weren't working very well, weren't even used, so we're trying to consolidate those so that there's a much more logical approach to the planned districts, and that those planned zoning districts have a very tight tie to those specific plans I mentioned a moment ago. So the ability to continually plan at more refined scales, when we get down to the planned zoning districts, we want to make sure it's really lining up with the comprehensive plan and then the specific area plans as well. As far as the plan implementation strategy, these are the things that we're suggesting need some new standards or revision of the current standards. These are, these five that are listed up here are pretty much the main topics that we see needed to better implement the comprehensive plan. I'll go through each one of them real quickly here. Transportation networks and street types. We do view the street types, the streets, as establishing that first element of the public realm. And so if you recall, in the plan, we talked about having different, not only your functional classification of streets, but also different design types for the context of those, the natural streets, the standard streets, activity streets, and neighborhood streets. So we are linking the UDC to those types, and specifically to that Section 82 of the plan, where it talks about not only the different street types there, it talks about the long-range transportation plan, and it talks about the livable streets policy that you all have enacted as well. So those standards will now be tied towards implementing those policies. And just a representative example of how different the street types can be for different contexts, very much linking it to the place types that we have in the master, in the comprehensive plan as well. Similar theme on open space types in Chapter 406, your subdivision standards, you have an open space requirement, but it's just a fairly generic 20% to 40% open space. Doesn't say a lot of what you want to accomplish with that, so we're adding some design types and variations to that so that you will have more options and more opportunities to kind of extend the public realm from the streets. These could be both public and private open spaces, and currently, most of them, I would hazard our guess, are private, because that's the way the standards read, but adding some specificity to those different types and have some examples of those as well. So it's not just space for the sake of space, but each of the different contexts of the comprehensive plan, whether you're doing a more compact walkable center, or whether you're in the corridor reinvestment area, they're going to warrant looking at different types of open spaces, so giving a little more clarity to what you're trying to accomplish there as well, so it's not just a standard for space, but that you're actually building a public realm for development to respond to. The next major change is going towards a more building-type approach. This is, when we last met, I think, in our discussion, when you contingently adopted the comprehensive plan, it was suggested that we look at the downtown plan, and what types of things can we borrow from that and extend citywide? And the building-type approach in that, in that code, I think, is one that really can work citywide, and specifically on the residential zoning districts. So what we've done is we've taken, this is an example of what your code may look like if you go to a strictly building-type approach. So down the left are the different building types, and across the top are the zoning districts that they're allowed in, and the different categories of coding there tell you what type of allowance is it. Is it permitted? Is it a special approval, or is it a conditional discretionary approval of the certain building types? And the idea is, much like your downtown plan, each of those building types come with a specific set of standards that really tie that building and lot to the public realm and tie it to a particular context of where you're developing. We've suggested adding two, so what's changed from this, from what you currently have? We're suggesting adding two new neighborhood zoning districts to do more of the mixed-density residential that might happen probably more in your future growth areas mainly, but that's where a lot of the different types would be most open and most allowed. But there's still opportunity to integrate them into your current zoning districts. Seven of the residential building types are directly from your downtown plan already, so their standards you're already using, and we think they're applicable in the various zoning districts. These are mainly dealing with the small-scale multifamily units, something that looks at multifamily different than just density. It looks at it as a building type. So the downtown code is very strong in that, and we think that can benefit other districts as well. So we're expanding them to be used generally. Three new types, more for small lot options, and they're primarily apply in the new districts, but there is some more limited opportunity to use them in the existing districts. And then all of the existing building types that are currently available are there, too. These are kind of borrowing some of the, just the pure bulk and lot standards, and they're the standards you're currently using that are just keyed to the zoning district, and we're just tying them to a building type rather than keying them just to a zoning district. So all of what's currently allowed is still there as well. And then the current single-family districts are pretty much untouched. I mean, that's the, consistent with what we talked about in the master plan process. You know, that's what the, been a strength of the community, so all of that is still there and virtually in the same standards that you currently have. This strategy also can apply to the non-residential types. And again, borrowing from the downtown code, there's five building types in there that we think could be applicable citywide, mainly in the walkable centers and also in the corridor reinvestment areas as you go to. A good example of this, I think, is up on 7, where you're starting to have some infill pad sites occurring in some of the larger parking areas. So, you know, what, actually, putting a package together that's a building type for that specific application makes a lot of sense. So I think some of those things can work well by taking a more building-type approach to your zoning districts. Again, the two new ones are that pad site, which isn't in your current downtown, mainly because it's not applicable to that context, but adding that type of building. And then we also talked a lot about the job hubs in the corridor reinvestment area. What can we do to repurpose those to allow, maybe it's light industrial, maybe it's more of a workshop activity, or something that's generating economic activity out of existing buildings, or perhaps new infill buildings. So the small industrial workshop building type is one that we're adding as well. And then again, similar to the residential, all of your existing ones are still there, so the same standards are there. We're adding more options in. One of the other major changes is this idea of frontage types. This is, again, borrowing something from your downtown code. One of the reasons we think it could be particularly applicable citywide is mainly dealing with some of the corridor reinvestment areas, which are particularly challenging. If we go back to the idea of what we're trying to do is relate, get private development to relate to the public realm a little bit better. So when there is public investment, the corresponding private investment is creating that relationship. So the frontage of development is where we want to focus our attention. How is that designed? Your current standards don't do that at all. In fact, similar to the, when we talked about the open space and subdivision regulations, for your site design standards, it very much does that. It just picks a number, 20%, 30%, 40% open space, and it doesn't matter how it's designed, where it is. It could most likely be leftover space on the, on a development. And so the idea is, if we focus on the design of how that building and lot relates to the street and streetscape, perhaps a lot less percentage is needed. Maybe not, maybe so, but these different types of frontages are all things that are applicable, and we're picking examples that exist in the metro area to use as illustrations of them, but they just, they're just a different design strategy that can get development to better relate to the streetscapes and open spaces. And so here's an example from the draft code of what it may look like. Basically, taking the two that you currently use, which is a buffer edge or just a setback with open space in it, or in the residential format, it's more commonly a yard, thought of as a yard, but then adding some of the ones from the downtown plan, a courtyard, a terrace, a frontage plaza, which could be a much smaller, compact design space. Someone that does that should get just as much credit as just leaving 40% open space on the back of their lot that really doesn't do anything to enhance the public realm. And then the last one, the enhanced streetscape frontages for those walkable areas where we do build some of those activity streets, very little open space will be required. In fact, you want the buildings to be fronting on the street, so a way to give credit for them meeting, meeting the same intent, getting their site to relate better to what's around them, but through a different design strategy. And so those are the four new options I just mentioned right there. That's a real quick overview. We do have strike-through versions of how we're reworking all the current sections. If anyone is interested and wants to pour through them, we'd be more than happy to do that. Our next steps is, working with staff, we're going to be going through those strike-through versions and figuring out the exact details of how some of these concepts get implemented. Again, I think we're probably 65 to 75% there, and we'll be doing that over the next two months to try and develop it into a final draft. And then that final draft would go through a broader review and discussion amongst technical people who will be charged with implementing it. And then our hope is to be able to introduce something into the formal adoption process. However long or short that would need to take is a question, but at least to have something ready to introduce into that process about the first of the year. I'd be happy to cover any questions, or like I said, if you want to think about it or dive into some of the documents, or you have my email, or Scott can get it to you, and we'll be happy to discuss anything you'd like with this.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for that overview.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have a public hearing on annexation of Lone Pines Acres Lots 1 and 2. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, for this public hearing, A N X 09144555, I'd like to introduce one exhibit, which includes a city council information forum with attachments, petition of voluntary annexation agreement, site location map, vicinity map, affidavit of publication as advertised in the Examiner September 13, 2014, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Again, before you, this evening is a request to annex the property. It's just over three and three-quarters acres in size. The location noted above, you can see it's on the south side of 40 Highway, in kind of what's, kind of a larger pocket of unincorporated Jackson County, immediately east of Industrial Drive area and west of the Timber Creek subdivision, Timber Creek East subdivision, excuse me. So the applicant is looking to come into the city in order to further develop his property and to have access to city sanitary sewer. It's currently a private sewer. If you drive by that area, if you're familiar with seeing DirecTV vans parked at a building, that's the area we're talking about. So the applicant is looking at moving ahead and doing some improvements at some point in the near future. So the applicant has also submitted rezoning and plating applications. Those are going before Planning Commission next week. And again, this is a public hearing, so the final reading of the ordinance bringing in the property, should it move forward in a positive fashion, would be before you again at the next meeting here in two weeks. So kind of a staggered process, if you recall, with kind of annexation with development review applications running concurrently. So those are kind of the quick overview of that. I'll certainly stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Ms. Allen, from the council. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is a property owner present and like to speak? Would you be sworn in?
Robert Walklist, 821 Northeast Columbus Street, Lee Summons. I'm here representing the owner. He is not available this evening. He apologizes for that, but I will address any questions that anybody has at this time.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in orders like to speak in favor of? Anyone in orders like to speak in favor of? In opposition to? In opposition to closing this public hearing? Next, we have another public hearing on the amendment to Adams Point Corporation First Amended Redevelopment Plan. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, for this particular public hearing, Harmon Building Heartland Properties of Missouri LLC, I'd like to introduce one exhibit, which includes a city council information forum, Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation Third Amended and Restated Redevelopment Plan, Adams Point Redevelopment Past and Planned Reinvestment by Current Owner, and Notice to Taxing Jurisdictions of Public Hearing Dated September 23, 2014, with Adams Point Redevelopment Plan Tax Impact Analysis, 1600 Northeast Cortez Circle. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay. Mr. Garner, if you'd like to speak? Hope he's sworn in.
Alan Garner, excuse me, Alan Garner, 3808 South Coachman Court, Independence, Missouri, Mayor and council, I'm here on behalf of the owner, who has placed this request before you. You will all recall, about a month ago, we went through this. Based on feedback and part of the discussion at that meeting, we have restructured and reduced the amount of the request. We've also tightened up the investment to make the investment match the dollars of the abatement, even though the abatement will occur over years, and the investment will tend to occur on the front end. We tried to make the math come out so that the part necessary to make the structure work for the extension location equals the amount of the abatement over the 10-year period. The significant difference, if you go through all the documents, is this is five years at 50%, followed by five years at 25% of abatement. Again, that was one of the numbers thrown out, and we tried to make that match as much as we could. Again, it still has the abatement tied to the lease with the University of Missouri-Jackson County Extension, and provides that should extension not occupy, A, it wouldn't happen, B, if they do occupy and then leave, the council could cancel the abatement. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like, anyone else? Like to speak in support of? In support of?
My name is Matt Burlhart, 12,000 Marbeck Trail, Independence, Missouri, 64052. I'm the county program director for MU Extension Jackson County, and basically just wanted to state that the Extension Council reviewed several building and facilities throughout Blue Springs. The hope was to stay in the Blue Springs, one of those including the Paul Consiglio Building. But the Extension Council really felt the decision that the Heartland Building is its best option, that they have available to them, not only for the present, but then also for their future, for the hopes of future growth for the office or for... their future, for the hopes of future growth for the office or for MU Extension services.
Any questions? Councilman Levissi?
I just wondered, since this was here a month ago, did the facilities committee have a chance to meet and discuss this? Was there alternatives sought?
Yes, we, yes. Took a personal walk through, through, we did receive a proposal from the school district, Paul Consiglio Building. We did walk through that, had a meeting prior to the walkthrough, as well as a meeting after, and really went through, we had a checklist of all the things that the council felt that they were looking for and what fit their needs, and at the end of the day, the Heartland Building just matched up more to fit the needs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? In opposition to? Yes, Councilman Fowler. Pardon?
Do we have an opportunity to talk to staff for some questions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah, I guess if we could quantify the dollar differences of the request tonight versus the request, you know, last month?
Your Honor, I'll take a stab at that. I don't have the report from last month, but I believe that the dollar value that's being presented tonight is, bear with me, Councilman, is a total amount of $269,264.29, and I may look for Mr. Garner to assist with this, but I believe the last request was somewhere between $550,000 and maybe close to $600,000.
It wasn't quite that, that much. The total reduction in tax abatement is about just under $100,000 less this time than last. Last time it was about $369,000. And the other thing in this was, we were very focused on impact on the school district. $52,000 roughly of those dollars stay with the school district. So...
$52,000 of which dollars?
Of the reduction. Out of that, $90,000 to $100,000, roughly 52 of that is school district money.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Anyone else before I close this public hearing for the record? Close this public hearing. Can you check and see if Councilman, it's going to be on? Thank you, Boy Scout troop, come back and see us again. It's time to introduce the bill.
If he wants to vote, yeah.
That was good, the magician. Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4337, approving the amendment of the Adams Point Corporation First Amended Redevelopment Plan. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
First reading of Bill Number 4337, an ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation First Amended Redevelopment Plan designated as the Third Amended and Restated Redevelopment Plan submitted by Heartland Properties of Missouri LLC and authorizing certain tax abatements within the Phase 1 Harmon Track portion of the redevelopment area described within the original redevelopment plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. So the new figure is proportionally a lot closer to what the MU improved requirements are? Would be a little more specific on that?
Your Honor, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the applicant, but there's, in the documentation that was provided as part of the restated plan, the applicant did provide an assessment and a breakdown of the costs that were going to be incurred on the property as a result of the relocation, and it relates to parking lot and entry configurations. And Matt may be better equipped to speak to this since he's actually in charge of the program and the facility, but I believe the documentation included in the, in the restated plan indicates a budget of approximately $255,000 from the applicant and an abatement of approximately $260,000. So they don't line up dollar for dollar, but they are certainly much more in line with what was presented in the original plan.
Okay, can I answer?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Councilman Evans?
If I may, if I remember that section right, did that not also include some landscaping? Or was that, am I reading that wrong or remembering that wrong?
Alan Garner. What is shown is some, there's an addition, there's two tables. One table shows everything, and there is some landscaping in that. In terms of the extension investment, landscaping is not there, except as it relates to the parking lot when it gets redone. So it's not, it's not taking care of the landscaping, but part of, and again, it was interesting to watch your unified development code, part of doing the parking lot will be to make sure that there's still some green space and things associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fowler?
When is the decision going to be made on the lease?
We have been in negotiations for some time with sort of open questions. It's my intent, based on whatever the council chooses to do tonight, to have a meeting in the morning to finalize the few details that are left, and if everything goes right, that will be circulated to the extension folks no later than Thursday.
And my understanding, is it correct that if there is no lease, there is no abatement, or at least we get to reconsider that?
Correct. It is tied with the lease. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, we have a motion before us, and more questions tonight, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
All right, second reading of Bill Number 4337, an ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation First Amended Redevelopment Plan Designated as the Third Amended and Restated Development Plan Submitted by the Heartland Properties of Missouri LLC and Authorizing Certain Tax Abatements Within the Phase 1 Harmon Track Portion of the Redevelopment Area Described Within the Original Redevelopment Plan.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levis?
Aye.
Carrying unanimously, giving an ordinance number 452.
All right. That brings us to Merrill announcements. I guess first and foremost, a candidacy to want to congratulate the Kansas City Royals for shocking the baseball world, and making it to the American League Championship Series that will begin Friday night, I believe, in Baltimore. And if they keep going like they're going, we might have a repeat of 1985, which a lot of people that were there celebrating weren't even born then. But it'd be nice.
I was here.
It was really interesting because, and I don't know if you all saw this tonight, and I don't want to get on my soap with this, but there was a gentleman that was there, and I figured he's probably getting, I guess about 40 now, had his son that said, "We're champions in 1985," and it was his jacket when he was five years old. So that was really neat. So anyway, we want to continue to pull for the Royals, and hopefully they'll have success as they proceed to win the crown. There are a couple of events that's going to happen before we meet again. Tomorrow night is the National Night Out on Crime. It's going to be held downtown, downtown here beginning at 5:30. It's always well-attended, and we look forward to doing that, and we invite the council, if you have an opportunity, to come down, and it's just a fun evening, and I think the weather's going to be great for it. And one of the reasons it was moved to October because August was just too hot and you created some other issues. So anyway, thank you on that. The other thing also has to do with the police department, Shop with the Blue Springs Cop fundraiser is Saturday, October 18th, at 6:00 PM in the Marlin Ridge Middle School. And so we look forward to doing that, and I know we had some issues where you had people trying to scam, and nothing is sacred anymore, pretending to be calling on behalf of the Blue Springs Shop with the Cop program and asking for people's credit card numbers. And I would caution anybody, when people start calling you asking for your credit card number, your social security number, hang up, because more than likely it's a scam to try and get you. That's all I, well, thoughts to ponder. I've had this one for a little while. It was sent to me by Councilman Jeff Coubel, and I wanted to make sure that he was present when I read it, and it said, and I quote, "Faith is taking the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase," end quote. And that was by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So thank you, and other council members, if you find something that's profound, I know a number of you have sent them to me, and we try to share those, please send them to me, and we'll share those during Thoughts to Pundit. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, or are there any visitors that'd like to address the council? Seeing none, I would accept a motion from Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move the body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Paragraph 1, 610.021, Paragraph 2, and 610.021, Paragraph 9. Remind statutes of Missouri for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between the governmental body or its representatives and its attorney relating to legal action, causes of action, or litigation involving this body and legal advice, discussions regarding real estate transactions where public knowledge may adversely affect legal considerations thereof, and for preparation and discussions including work product relating to negotiations with employee groups.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. A conditional second. Yeah, I want to know, do you really need reading glasses to read this?
Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levis?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye. For those that are sitting in the audience, we're going to convene in this executive session in the East Conference Room at...